I would like to do this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't think there's any changes to the agenda, so I'd ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second?
Thank you. Sean?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Then we have our claims and reports. Those are all in your share file. Everybody's gotten a chance to look at those. We'll move on to the consent agenda and consider a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it. Gibbon?
Thank you. Any discussion? Sean?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. We have our opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment?
David Tuntland, 28947, 474th Avenue, Beershaw, South Dakota. I feel Jim Gibbon's swearing-in ceremony as a new commissioner should have been done in the Lincoln County Commission Room and has always been done, not in the upstairs courtroom. It should have been livestreamed on Lincoln County's new $25,000 livestream video so his children, who are out of state, could watch. This is a big deal to be sworn in as a commissioner of Lincoln County, and it should have been available for his children, siblings, and friends to view it. As my understanding before, everyone would gather in the commission room on the day of the swearing-in, the pledge of allegiance to the flag should be recited, the commissioners are sworn in by a judge in front of a room and congratulated by the attendees and applauded for their hard work. Jim has worked hard to obtain his position and wish him the best for his position and wish him the best. Betsy, who lives in South Bend, Indiana, who works for Ag Day program, was quite disappointed as she had been looking for viewing him as he was going to be sworn in on livestream. Is there any way we can rectify this situation? Address this issue, please, so Gibbon's term can be productive and memorable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tuntland. Anybody else wish to address the board?
Hold my ass down, Tiffany.
You bet. Good morning, Dave.
David Gillespie, 1125 East Elder, Canton, South Dakota. I'm going to start with, I'll hold it to five minutes. I want to thank all the commissioners that are here today for the nice plaque that they gave me last week. Jim, you presented it to me. It was very, very nice. Good-looking plaque. Also, Sean, I just want to mention something to you. I'm a member of the Sioux Valley, sit on the Board Sioux Valley Regional Railroad Authority, and I don't think that spot was filled last week, and that'll be vacant for one of the commissioners. You know, it's down in Hudson at Poet all the time, but it's usually done by Zoom, so I think that was, you know, it's four times a year. And I think Steve Williams has done it, and maybe if you guys can't, Terry Floyd could fill that in. I don't know.
Or David Gillespie.
Well, I think you're supposed to be on the commission to sit on that. They like you to be, but it doesn't matter. I wanted to point that out, though. I'm going to start with Jim Gibbon. Jim, I want to thank you for running for District Two in my spot. It was, it was a long haul. You had a primary, you had a general, and I, congratulations for your next four-year The swearing-in last week, and I conferred with Commissioner Schmidt on this, was kind of a surprise to me why it wasn't done here in our forum here. His daughter in Lenox, his other daughter who works for Ag Day in Indiana, they couldn't watch it on livestream. So they kind of got, I guess, cheated out of that ceremony, so. Anyway, that, we usually take pictures of the commissioners that are going out, or, you know, the five of us in front of Lincoln. That wasn't done. The new ones coming in, that wasn't done. It just seems like there's a heck of a division here that's going on, anyway, so. Jim, Schmidt, thank you for working with me on the '21 budget. We met many times, had a lot of good breakfast. We did knock off a couple hundred thousand in the end, and I just want to thank you for working with me on that and the CAFO issues that are upcoming and in the past. Also, you and Commissioner Aaronz working on the jail study with Minnion County and Sheriff Milstead. We do agree to disagree at times, but we always talk, and we have breakfast, so, anyway. Tiffany, thank you for your two years of service on Lincoln County. I remember when you were, when I was a deputy, you were a Turner County State's Attorney, and I remember your name on all the documents that would come through. And I just appreciate you serving on planning and zoning for the last two years. It is difficult at times, so. Mike isn't here, but I'm going to make a statement on Mike. I wanted to thank him for helping me on my 2012 and 2016 election for sign placement on I-29 on his family's property. Also, in 2008, he called me and congratulated me by telephone, and I'd really never met the man before, but it's too bad he's here, but I'm sure he can watch it later if he wants. And then several weeks ago, he asked me after the commission meeting was over, he said, "If I haven't been a good chairman, I'll resign right now." And I didn't respond to it. Then he said it again, and then I responded. I said, "Mike, it's been a mess since February 18, 2020," and I left it at that. Joel Aaronz, thank you for the two years of service. We agree more than we disagree. Thank you for that. And your years with the service to our country and reaching the rank of Lieutenant Colonel. Thank you. And that's all I have, so.
Thanks, Dave.
Betty Yotten, 46787273rd Street in T., South Dakota. I was not actually going to stand up and speak, but I want to put my, how Jim Gibbon was treated last week to be, he was not even welcomed to this commission, and I think that was very sad. To isolate him for no reason at all was shameful to me, and it still speaks volumes of what's going on here. It was an honor for him. He is very well-respected in his own right, and then to diss him as he came onto this commission was inexcusable. It also speaks volumes that as the new commissioners started their brand-new meeting last week, they were all seated in their brand-new positions as chair, wasn't even elected yet, and yet you were all seated like it was a done deal. So that wasn't transparent as well. And also, addressing Mr. Poppins, who is not here at the time, but was he even sworn in? That wasn't even public knowledge that he had been sworn in. And as his living address is in dispute, did he move out at any time out of the district? And if so, does that make any of the contracts that he signed in dispute? End null, and we'd just like to know where he is today. You can't avoid us for four years. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone on the commission?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a few comments.
Sure, go ahead.
So I think this is somewhat timely, but an issue that I want to raise for the commission, I'm going to ask to have the topic I'm going to talk about put on the agenda for next week, is Lincoln County has a planning and zoning ordinance, and in that ordinance, there's a Section 17 which deals with signs. These are the kinds of signs that, you know, you may see put up by a business or put up by, you know, you see one going up on the highway just outside of town here. They're putting up a new billboard sign. But specifically, the planning and zoning section that I want to talk about is Section 17.04, and there's three exceptions created under Lincoln County's 2009 zoning ordinance. And specifically, it's Exception B that I want to talk about. Exception B says that political campaign signs, provided the signs are removed within five days after the election. So what that means is, is that Lincoln County has a law that says political campaign signs have to be removed five days after the election. And this was, it doesn't say the date that this exception was put in there, so I'm going to assume it's from the original 2009 ordinance. And what that means is, when a, when any unit of government says, "I want to treat a classification of signs differently based upon what it says," that means the government is discriminating based on a subject area, and I don't think that's right. But it's not just me who doesn't think it's right. The United States Supreme Court said in 2000-
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yeah.
I'm just going to refer you to Part Eight of our public policy on public comment section, that I don't think this is proper for public comment for that reason, if you want to take a look at that.
Well, that's what I'm talking about, is that's viewpoint discrimination right there. I shouldn't be discriminated against because of what I want to say. And so-
Well, then we need to look at our public comment policy and change it if need be, but I'm referring you to it, and I don't want to cut you off, but right now, what you're doing is in violation of that policy.
Well, the policy is violating against my First Amendment rights.
Again, I think that's a matter that we need to discuss possibly, about changing the policy.
Well, I'm not going to stand down because of viewpoint discrimination based on the part of the chairman right now, so.
I'm going to call point of order, Commissioner Aaronz.
Well, I'm going to object.
Well, your objection is noted.
You're putting the county at great risk of being litigated against for viewpoint discrimination now.
Is there anyone else on the commission who'd like to speak?
I would just offer, Commissioner Aaronz, I know you're passionate about this, but would this be better if you put this on the agenda for more vetting and comp, so we could properly talk about this, you know, if it's on the agenda item? We don't have any issues with rules and regulations. That's your prerogative to present any and all information on your viewpoint as far as the Lincoln County zoning ordinance pertaining to signs. I'm going to just offer you that to say, put it on the agenda so we can, we can fully vet it.
Well, this is the public comment period, and I'd like to talk about it now. It doesn't need to be on the agenda to be discussed.
Commissioner Aaronz, point of order.
Well-
You no longer have the floor. We're going to move on to regular business unless there's another commissioner that has any public comment. Thank you. Moving on to regular business, Sean, we have appointment of highway superintendent. Are you handling that?
Yes, ma'am. We need to appoint the highway superintendent for another two years, and we need to appoint the coroner to be Kenneth Snell, and we're required to do that every election, that there isn't one that runs.
Thank you. I would consider a motion to appoint Terry Floyd as highway superintendent and Kenneth Snell as coroner.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it. Gibbon?
Thank you. Any further discussion? Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. And then we have Toby. Are you, Toby's not here. Sean, do you have what we need for the number two?
Southeastern Council of Governments contacted us and informed us that their bylaws actually allow three voting members of commissioners instead of just two. And last meeting, we appointed Tiffany Landine as Board Number One and Jim C. Gibbon as Board Number Two to the Urbanized Development Board, and Michael Poppins as the alternate. And what they are requesting is what was done, not in the beginning of last year, but some sometime in the first quarter last year, that the alternate become Board Member Number Three, and that Toby Brown and Terry Floyd become the alternates.
Thank you, Sean. I do remember that happening kind of midway through the year where that changed, so I would ask for a motion to appoint Michael Poppins as the third UDC Board Member. Is there somebody else that wants to do it?
Commissioner Aaronz, would you do that?
Do what?
Be on, replace on that UDC for CCOG as the fourth thing? I mean, is it the third area? You want to read what that is?
Yeah. It'll be the Southeastern Council of Governments Urbanized Development Board. Board Number Three is open. They're requesting a third spot to fill per their bylaws. And then they also requested to have two alternates. They suggested Toby Brown and Terry Floyd, but of course, that's up to the board.
Happy to do it.
I would nominate Joel Aaronz to replace, fill that position.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. Gibbon?
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think former Commissioner Gillespie brought a good point about the railroad, wasn't it, Dave?
Yes.
Dave, I don't know that we have to have somebody elected from our board, because we've had people serve on that that have been on that for a long, long time, and they haven't been commissioners.
Yeah, John Frisley served, Jim, years ago, and I think Steve Williams has served, and I've been on there. They've got behind my name in Lincoln County. There's a person from, it's with LPM.
All right. So do we have to put that on the agenda, Madam Chair, so we can fill that, or can we just fill it?
It doesn't matter.
I mean, I'd rather, I'd rather err on the side of caution and have it on the agenda.
We'll put it on the agenda, but don't go away, Dave.
I just wanted to make sure Sean had that.
Because that board, that board, that board could be with you a long time.
Well, it's, they meet at Poet, and it's all the time. And it's, you know, it's-
Gotcha.
And are you willing to continue doing that?
Yeah.
Well, it's my position. I've got several of them right now, so. We used to be able to put my list down, and now we took that out, but it doesn't matter. It'd have to be on me, my wife's permission. She's controlling it. Anyway.
Well, finally.
We can think about it. There's not a-
Well, we'll put it on, Dave, next, next agenda, but don't go away.
And I won't be here probably next year.
That's good. Doesn't make any difference, Dave.
It's a chance to explore Hudson.
All right. Excuse me for, Madam Chair.
Oh, you're fine. Terry?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am, my first item I have, I'm looking to go to, looking for permission to go to bid for the 2021 projects that we have. We'll be looking to bid the paving project, reseal project, micro-surface project, and our bridge project for 2021. You want more information on those? We do have cost estimates on several of those. The paving project, we're looking at doing about 11 miles of mill and overlay. That is going to be about $1.3, $1.4 million estimate for that project. The reseal project, we have about 33 miles or so of reseal we'll be doing. Cost estimate on that is going to be just under $1 million, like $990. The bridge project, we're only doing one structure this year. I do not have a cost estimate from the engineers yet, but budget amount, we're looking probably around in the $400,000 area. You know, I put in my, I put in the sheet, it's 500 is what I had budgeted. Micro-surfacing project, I think I had budgeted about $650,000 or something thousand for that project, so.
Madam Chair, I would, I would approve for the highway superintendent to advertise for the 2021 highway projects.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Next item I have, I'll be going to, looking for permission to go to bid, to advertise for 2021 highway supply bids. This is going to include cutting edges, concrete pipe products, crushed concrete, diesel and ethanol, plant-mixed asphalt, quartzite riprap, rock salt, calcium chloride for mag water, and then weed chemicals.
Do I have a motion?
I'll, I'll so moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Next item I have for you, is permission to purchase 21, 2021 equipment. First item I have is a track skid loader. We'll be purchasing, purchasing this from Butler Cat. I think the, the purchase price, we'll be purchasing it off of Sourcewell. The purchase price is $85,512.53. Looking for approval.
Is there a motion to approve the purchase?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins? Or, I'm sorry, Landine?
Yes.
Next item I have is another 2021 equipment purchase. We're going to be looking at buying a patching hot box. We'll be purchasing this item from Lauren Asphalt. It's a business out of Minnesota. Price on this unit is going to be $53,803.
I'd consider a motion?
I'll so moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Next item I have, we'll be passing a resolution to do spring load limits. In your, in your files, you should have the map that I have for this year. We've updated, added a few, took a few roads off. I don't have that resolution. Do you need to read that prior to them passing that, Sean? Do you have that?
Would you like me to read that?
Please.
Linkin County Weight Limit Enforcement Resolution. Whereas seasonal climatic, climatic changes can be detrimental to our highways and create dangerous driving conditions, and whereas the Lincoln County Board of County Commissioners desires to protect existing Lincoln County highways, ultimately saving tax dollars, and whereas the Lincoln County Board of County Commissioners desire the enforcement of weight limitations on Lincoln County highways as set forth and posted by the Lincoln County Highway Department, now therefore be it resolved. Whereas the limits on Lincoln County highways shall be set at seven tons per axle, 40 ton max, on designated asphalt-surface roads, and six tons per axle on designated gravel roads during the spring thaw period, and when load limit signs are in place and that the South Dakota Motor Carrier Services is hereby requested to enforce said reduced weight limitations on Lincoln County highways, be it further resolved that the penalty for the violation of the load restrictions shall be set forth in SDCL 32-22-55.
Thank you. I'd consider a motion to approve and sign the resolution for the spring load limits.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Next item I have for you is to authorize the chair to sign a request for services from motor carrier to send out to peer, so they can enforce this resolution on our, on our roads. And again, that, that, I think that request is in your file?
It is. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Last item I have on here is going to be the highway maintenance building exhaust project. Looking for authorization to go to bid on this. I think tentatively looking, I think it's February 3 for bid opening on that.
Terry, this is the one that we, you do all, all your work, all your welding and all your stuff, and air quality is probably not too conducive to stay there very long, right?
Yes. This is for the fab shop and the wash bay.
Yep. That pays for itself practically. I'll move for approval of that.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Sean, will you call the roll?
Is this-
Oh, I'm sorry, Jim.
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
Is, is this what we talked before? I know at a previous meeting, you said there was, there was rusting of the beams and stuff like that developing, or what?
Yeah, it's around door jams, especially in the wash bay. The condensation, the ventilation we have currently in the wash bay isn't adequate to get the humidity and moisture out of there. We're noticing a lot of corrosion and stuff along doorways and metal products in there.
Do, forgive my ignorance here, but do we have a wash bay outside as well?
No. Typically, the, probably the most used that it gets is in the winter months due to, you know, running salt in the sanders and cleaning trucks up after events, after snow and ice events. So typically, after an event, we'll run every piece of equipment through the wash bay to get them all cleaned up, because otherwise, we're just asking for problems later on the road on vehicles, you know? And again, I think they run through the loaders and everything through that, so.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Sean, you want to call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Next item, inmate population trends. Sean, was Steve going to come down?
I believe this was, this was requested to be placed by Aaronz. I can call Steve.
Okay. No, that's fine. Joel, go ahead.
Bill Garnos' contract that he submitted-
Bill Garnos' contract that he submitted, asking for approval. And so, we've previously voted on this, but if we need to do it again, we can. This is just simply the agreement between the county and Garnos to move forward.
I don't think, the last time we didn't actually have a copy of the agreement, is that right?
That's correct.
Go ahead and, everybody's had a chance to review that agreement.
Yeah, unless, unless anybody has questions, I'll move to approve it.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I will say I was, I voted no on this, and I guess I don't, my point is just that I don't see why we're paying for something that Minnehaha County is going to have to pay for anyway. And I don't think we should be paying their share of this study. But other than that, we did vote on it. So I'll just, go ahead, Sean, you can call the roll again.
Commissioner?
Sorry, did you have a question?
Will you repeat what the motion is?
The motion will be to approve and authorize the chair to execute the consulting agreement with Bill Garnos Consulting Services for an update to Lincoln and Minnehaha County inmate population trends.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Sean.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
No. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Harold. Is Harold going to come down, Sean?
He's right there, man.
Oh, there he is.
He's the fandom.
Good morning, Harold.
Good morning. I snuck in when you weren't looking.
You usually sit over there.
Well, I didn't. I went out first and came back in. I had to let a gentleman in the big gate so he could work on the generator and service that, so. But the form you're looking at is just one that needs a signature by the, the chairperson and the auditor. I've already signed it. It says that I've completed everything I need to do for the first quarter of 2021, which is October through December. And the 8521, which is already submitted, which says we use COVID money for the last, the first quarter up to December, now we'll be using the L E M P G funding process, which is 50% of my salary. So from now on, you'll see another form that needs, doesn't need signature, but it'll probably come before you stating that, so. There's no further questions. I just asked that the chair sign that form and the auditor afterwards, and then I'll send it to my regional coordinator.
Thank you, Harold. Is there a motion to approve and authorize the chair and auditor to execute the signature sheet?
Also moved, Madam Chair.
I have a first, thank you. First by Gibbon, second by Ehrens. Any other discussion? Sean, you want to call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Harold. Ms. Sweetard?
Good morning. In your file, you should have the memorandum of understanding from SDSU Extension. It's the same MOU that was presented in November. They just send out a new one every January to the people that just have county employees. So we're just asking for a motion for the chair to sign that agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Okay, and then it's my understanding that the people in my position before have given a annual report to the commission, so this is just an informative report of Lincoln County 4H for 2020. This is just our general information about how many clubs we have and their locations in the county, our total enrollment. This is an estimate of our active members from 2020. We were unable to get the exact numbers because they changed over the system, so we were unable to get those numbers. So we based it off of what we ordered for T-shirts this last year. So that's what we had for active members as well as volunteers. As with everything with COVID in 2020, we had to change things up. And in these pictures here, you can see that these contests were all done from the participants' homes, and were all done virtually. So our contestant numbers were down, but I believe that was because people just weren't sure of the new format and how to do things virtually. But it did work out well for the people that did it this way. So the first one is a boy that did his public presentation on playing by the rules and how to set a winning table. The middle one is a special foods entry, and the third one is fashion review. Then in our youth and action events, our participants for the consumer decision making and the horticulture were similar in number from the year before because we were able to do those contests in schools the very first Monday in March. So it was before everything went downhill. Our livestock judging had about the same amount of participants because we were able to do the Swim Power Livestock Show judging contest. And our poultry judging participants, we just went from one to three because we had more interested. So you'll note the state contests for consumer decision and horticulture were only offered virtually and was participation only. State poultry judging was done virtually, but they made that one competitive, and we had the top junior in the state. And state livestock judging was done in person in Brookings in mid-September. This is our county livestock exhibits for the last five years. This year was quite different. So you'll see that poultry had an explosion here with 28 more birds than before, but some of our other areas were down a little bit, in particular sheep. But I know there's some, there were some families that had decided not to purchase sheep or just get them ready for the fair in May because they were unsure of what we were going to be doing for Achievement Day. So they just opted not to participate this year in that. So this year, all county livestock shows were come and go and limited to immediate family. Shows were streamed on the Achievement Day specific Facebook page. We used the new building to hold the socially distanced rabbit and companion animal shows, and we did not have a dog show this year due to the inability to practice due to COVID. In our static exhibits, we had 152 exhibits this year, which is considerably down from before. However, we did this in July when we would normally have done Achievement Days. And at the time, the state 4H regulations were 15 people allowed at the same time inside a building. So we limited our exhibits for static exhibits to five per person. And at state fair, we brought six, and members were limited to two static exhibits and was participation only. So we were able to purchase some classical dividers for static exhibits for future Achievement Days and replace our portable speaker system that broke down this year. So these pictures on here are exhibits that they did, and we put them on our Achievement Day Facebook page and organized them by club. At state fair, we had 80 exhibits this year. We have had 150 last year. And that was, in the past few years, 4Hers could bring 10 livestock exhibits to the state fair per person. This year, they limited to animals per species. So they had more, so people could spread out at state fairs, why they did that this year. So it was still a good learning experience for the kids. This is just some notable livestock achievements. This particular page is all of our beef results. We had the champion beginner showing, and that's the girl that's showing the calf at the top of the page there. And then we also had some in our small animals with poultry rabbit, and then some sheep stuff. So the small animals, which was poultry rabbit, companion animal, dog, and the state horse show showed in here on the weekend before the state fair, which is unusual. Usually it's just the state horse show that shows earlier in the summer. Shooting sports, we had 38 participants in 2020. We currently have 63 enrolled in the project area this year, and we have eight leaders and volunteers, which is the same amount we have now. This group was the first to use the new building. As you can see here, they started practices at the end of January, and they practiced every Sunday until COVID started. So we will start practices again for shooting sports in person, January 17th, this Sunday. It will be different this year with face masks required, distancing in place, and different times for the different disciplines to keep their numbers down for the state 4H regulations. We held recognition event early this year in mid-September. Usually it's about mid-November. The thought behind that was we didn't know how COVID numbers were going to go into the fall, and we wanted to be able to hold our recognition event. So these are the, our main award winners we had this year. So we had intended to do it outside of the new fairgrounds, but it was incredibly windy that day, so we did go indoors with masks. In our current year, you can see these pictures are, we started offering crafty clover bags to families in November. So these are the three projects we've offered so far, free to families to pick up in our office to work on at home. We are participating in the statewide 4H community service project. As you'll notice, when you come in, the west doors here, we have a box where you can drop off eyeglasses. The goal is to collect 2021 eyeglasses across the state for the community service project. We are preparing for fruit sales next month. We were unable to do them in 2020 because when we should have been getting our fruit was when COVID hit, and we could not get together to sort our fruit at that time. We have also applied for a grant from the South Dakota 4H Leaders Association for a program to do a two-day workshop geared toward life skills, but we won't know that awarding until January 15th, so. I added this slide in here about the Lincoln County Fairgrounds Foundation. They received the 501(c)(3) status in April. These are our members. I just serve as the board liaison to go to present this information to the commission and to our leaders association. We had a raise the roof fundraiser in March, right when COVID was starting, which was successful. The foundation has received $13,200 in grant money toward the building project. They held a craft inventor show November 21st, had some ongoing fundraisers. And the foundation is thankful to all of the businesses and individuals have generously given to the building project. And as of today, the foundation has raised more than $100,000. Here's just some fun facts provided by SDSU Extension. This picture is a picture of the Teapot Troopers 4H Club that decorated Christmas tree at T-City Hall and collected socks for the Bishop Dudley Hospitality House. And then, any questions?
Who was that handsome guy that won the Friends of 4H Award?
John Rambo.
Well, I think, I think, John, that was a well-deserved, well-deserved, John, because I can't think of anybody that put more time in preparing that facility and getting it ready to be occupied and all the other ancillary things that go along with that, so congratulations. I think that's well-deserved.
And I will add that we've been able to have some 4H clubs have met at the new building, and we will have the first paid event there in March, so.
Very good. Nice presentation, too. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Sure.
Question. Wendy, could we have a copy of this, or can you send it, email and so on and so forth, or?
Will Sean have it somewhere?
I'll take care of it, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Good information.
Thank you. Which button do I need to push again, Sean, to make it go back to the thing? Dot cam? There we go. Got it. Thanks.
And just for the record, we do have, Wendy, we have the security set. You know, it's one thing to have two individuals that work there on a, on a major highway. And given the, given what's going on around our country today, I think it was incumbent upon having those two young people have security. So now they have a button, and you can notify 911, which will alert not only this Lincoln, or the Lennox Police Department, but also the Sheriff's Department, so that they have some semblance of security and safety for themselves, so. Happy to have that done.
Moving on to the next item, we have the Marvsky Lincoln County Airport Management Request for Beacon Replacement. Was Jordan Paul going to speak to that?
I thought Jordan was to be here to speak to that. I don't see him, though.
The email that he had sent indicated that they had rigged a beacon pole and a weight system. That's not very high quality. They did this years, many years ago, apparently. He's, was asking to upgrade some of the system, which is included in the quote that's in your share file. The actual new beacon light pole would be an additional $22,000, based on the information he received. But he didn't really think that was necessary at the time. But he needs to get approval since this is over $5,000. He indicates the financial impact of this is $10,245.90. It is not necessarily a line item in his approved budget, but there is $19,000 available for repairs.
Do you want to wait? Because I'd like to, you know, we're on, we're, we're very close to being able to get this airport to be upgraded, so we have an instrument approach. And if we had an instrument approach, it would change the entire usability of this airport far beyond what it currently is by just site. So we've made, you know, there have been several improvements. There have been hangars that have been removed. There have been setbacks that have been enforced. We've, the FAA and the county have invested a lot of money there to get this done. So if this will expedite that, I don't have any problem with that. But I'd like to find that out, if that's one of the ingredients that would help facilitate and move up that instrument approach use.
John, do you have any information about it? I wonder, I wonder if we should, since Mike is the one that's out on that, Commissioner Poppins is the one that's working with the airport, if we should wait for him?
I guess if you wanted to accomplish something with it today, we could have Jordan called, maybe.
Yeah. Could, could you get him to call and just find out? Because it isn't a major item, but if it, if it adds to our ability to get that instrument approach, that changes everything. That can, that can increase usage. It increases the amount of volume they get, the fuel they get. And we get reimbursed for some of that, so it helps us offset the cost of running that airport.
So is there a special number they need to call to?
I can go try to get ahold of him by his cell, but if he's flying, it won't. I can go do that.
I'll go with you. So I've got Mark's cell number, too, if maybe Mark could address it also.
Okay.
So we'll hold off on that one for now. And then, Mr. Golden, did you have a couple of items you wanted to address? There's a temporary easement request from HDR and that surplus tax deed property that we talked about last, the last meeting.
The, I have not been in contact with HDR directly on the, oh, there we go.
Oh, there we go.
So maybe he wants to address the, I just believe they want to use the property that's south of the airport for easements. It's not the actual property that's part of the airport. It's the one that's further to the south. Right. That would be the piece of property, because otherwise, if it's at the airport, then we'd have to do studies for the equipment.
Madam Chair? Could he speak into the mic, please?
Yeah, I would ask you to come up and identify yourself, so everybody can hear you.
I have a question, too. Morning, everybody. I'm Ben Schultz. I'm the engineer of record for the city of T, and I'm with HDR Engineering. We had submitted a request to the county for consideration. The city of T is planning to do some improvements to 272nd Street, which is the street that extends from First Street, as it's known in T, in front of the city's wastewater lagoons, out to Sundowner Avenue near the airport on the south side. That, that project is bringing utilities out to some of the industrial parks that have annexed into the city of T recently. And in order to accommodate the project for grading utilities, moving dirt around, and so on, we're asking for an easement on, on all the properties that are parallel with that road to accommodate the project. County owns some of that property, so that's the primary request. We did not give a detailed description of the easement area to bill yet because we wanted feedback from you first, because it's kind of a two-part question. The first is a general temporary easement, just to facilitate the construction of the project, as I mentioned. So anything that would be disturbed within any of the temporary easement area would be restored. One question we also had was, I believe that area is used for agricultural purposes at the moment. I don't know if the county has a lease with anybody on that. But if there were disruptions, you know, to the areas that are being cultivated- but if there were disruptions, you know, to the areas that are being cultivated, we would incorporate into the easement agreement compensation for crop damage. And then, the second part of the question would be, given its proximity to the project as a whole, we're also looking for an area potentially larger than our standard temporary easement dimensions to accommodate the contractor for staging, so they have a place to place materials, move additional things around that isn't right on the road. And so if the county is open to considering that as a staging area as well, then we would probably modify the dimensions of the temporary easement area to be a bit larger, still covering any crop damage or anything like that. But then we can define in our scope of work to the contractor, the area that they're able to use. So that's the request.
Is there, are, is the easement that they're looking at for utilities, are those all underground utilities?
The, the easement's actually for construction only. It would, it's, it's really a surface activity. All of the utilities for the project will be placed within the right-of-way. So we won't be building anything outside of the statutory right-of-way along that road, other than temporary grading. Really, we're reshaping the ditches. That road will remain rural in nature. It will not be urbanized.
It won't be anything that affects the airport?
No, we're actually going to be about a half mile away from the airport. We won't be south of the airport at all.
Thank you.
How large of a staging area do you need?
We would probably ask for roughly about 100 feet deep, I'll call it, north-south dimension, and the, the length of the property from Sundowner Avenue to Linda Avenue. I'm not sure of that dimension. I think it's probably about 800 feet, something like that. Majority of that work would probably be coming and going in and off of Linda or Sundowner, so the corner there is the most accessible place. Because the county does have land that wraps around the one farmstead that's in that spot, but the rest of that land is really in the middle of the project, and it's not accessible from any other road. So we'd be looking more at the corner at Sundowner.
Does the county currently have an agreement with anybody for the use of that property? Was there a?
I don't believe so.
There wasn't any kind of, we didn't inherit the contract from the previous owner at all?
No, in reviewing the title insurance, I didn't see any other encumences on it, so. Not, not that I'm aware of, no.
So just to be clear again, what exactly are the two projects? Is, is the project one an easement and the second one in the holding area? Is that correct?
Well, it's all for a single project. It's just, I guess, two considerations. The first was a temporary easement, really just to facilitate construction. That easement area would be similar in dimension, but it would just be 30 feet along the entirety of the county property. It's the same easement we're asking of all the other property owners along the project that's uniform. But if you're willing to consider staging in addition, we would just basically just make that easement larger on the same piece of property.
And, and the second part of that, will there be, you know, housing of contractors' machinery or something like that?
They would have the ability to, yeah, to keep and stage equipments and materials in that area. Stockpiles of, you know, gravel or what have you, they'd be able to park equipment over there. We would require that they remove any topsoil and probably put some sort of material down, so, you know, it's usable and accessible. And then when it's all said and done, they would have to take out any materials that were left, and then they'd have to replace the topsoil.
So Jim, it's right in the southwest corner of 272nd, Sundowner?
Yes.
If you're, if you know where that's at.
Red Barn, across the street.
Red Barn.
Yep.
Okay.
Red Barn, Camp House.
Okay. So in the past, have we charged any fees for anything like this? Or do we just, if they have an easement, they can do this? I mean, park their equipment there, or?
Typically, when we've done projects with the city, temporary easements, because of the restoration that's a, you know, it's associated with it, especially ones with, between public entities, it's usually non-compensated or for the cost of a dollar. Usually there's some amount that's included in the agreement. I'm not sure how that works on the county side.
It doesn't have, there doesn't have to be a fee between county government, the county and the city to do those projects if you don't choose to.
Have you seen the proposed contract?
No, we haven't given that out yet. We wanted to get feedback first before we developed the content.
Not that this will affect any of my votes or anything, but HDR, you understand that we have 4-H that is looking for donations to build?
Not appropriate, and we're going to stop.
Just a suggestion, I, I.
Yeah, we're just not, yep, we're done.
Sorry, Bill, I didn't want to hear much of it.
That's a good thought, Commissioner Schmidt, apparently, but.
Free will donations are always accepted. Wendy, get his name.
I think you should take a vote and strongly suggest granting it at this point.
You're, and we're more than happy to share an exhibit and the actual agreement at any time, but we'll certainly deliver that probably yet this week, so.
Thank you. I would ask for a motion to approve the temporary easement request from HDR for the city of T.
I would so move, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I'll second for discussion. Ben, how long are you going to need the easement for?
The duration of the project is one year, and the temporary easement agreements for projects last an additional year beyond the completion of the project, just so we have ability to enforce the contractor to uphold the requirements in the agreement, which would be restoration in this case.
You, you said just now in response to one of the questions, there could be storage of dirt and gravel out there?
Correct, they'd have to put erosion control around the whole area.
Okay, we're not talking like dirt pile at the corner of 57th and Bonson right now, are we?
No, no.
30 feet high infill dirt?
No, and this would all be, a, any stockpiles for the project would be temporary for the period of construction. We don't anticipate anything, and we would include in the contract documents that they can't leave anything undisturbed like that. Or if they do, they have to basically level it out, cover it with a cover crop, so you don't get wind erosion and water erosion. And then, the, the limits of the temporary easement area, to kind of define the limits itself and to protect the environment, we usually surround that with either a silt fence or a wattle, just so runoff doesn't go out and away. And on this piece of property in particular, you know, Nine Mile Creek is pretty much down the hill, so we'd want to protect that as much as we can.
We're going to need to find a renter for this property, too, I think. Is this currently eggland? Is it?
A majority of it that's on the higher elevation is. I believe a lot of the stuff that's down lower is predominantly wetlands and floodplain. We wouldn't be doing any work down in that area.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair?
Yes.
If, if I have this correctly, it could be up to two years?
Yes. Any further discussion?
Was that motion for the 30-foot or 100-foot option?
Well, there's two parts proposed. One is for the easement itself, and the other is for an enlarged easement for the staging. My understanding of the motion was that we were voting on approving both.
Okay.
I would, that was my motion. We'd, we'd vote both the easement and this 100 feet, whatever they're looking for.
Ben, how soon do you need this?
We don't really need it until construction would commence, which we're anticipating would be March. So, I mean, if you guys want to see an exhibit and all that stuff, we can certainly do that at another meeting before construction begins. We're going to bid the project. It'll be advertised January 29th coming up here, and we would award February 11th. Construction won't happen until probably at the end of February at the very earliest, so.
I think it seems like a reasonable request. I, I think it also seems like a reasonable offer to see an exhibit first as well. And if you're not running into any deadlines right now.
Is the exhibit, is, I mean, would you, is what you'd present what we already have in our share file? The photographs?
It would be similar, but it'd be a little more formal, and it would be accompanied with the actual agreement document.
Counselor, are you all right with that?
Yes.
Okay. So will I entertain, if somebody wants to amend their motion to table?
I'll, I'll amend the motion to table.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
And then that tax deed property bill, what do we need to do? We didn't get any bids on that last week.
No, technically, we're opening them at 10:15. Is that the one we're doing?
Nope.
No, that's a different one.
Okay. No, we didn't get any bids on that. However, there has been some interest now. I believe there's at least one bidder who missed the time deadline, is my understanding, and he would like the opportunity to, so I would suggest that we re-advertise and accept bids again. And I think there is one out there.
Okay. Can we vote on that today on re-advertising, or would you like to see that as a new agenda item at the next meeting?
I think it's on the agenda for, that's, we're talking 16, correct?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I believe that we can take a vote to re-advertise at this point.
Okay. I would go ahead and entertain a motion to re-advertise.
I'll so move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any discussion? Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Sean, were we able to get Jordan on the phone?
No, and John also called Mark, and they both went to voicemail.
What's the thoughts of the board? Do we want to vote on this, or do we want to wait until we have somebody present?
I'll move to table.
I'm, I'll second.
Till, till next meeting.
Yeah.
Or until they become available.
I think that's appropriate as well.
I, I would also suggest that we consult with the engineers that the, that we have for the airport prior to this.
That's what I was, I was worried about, the instrument panel and the height and all that with this, so. We got a motion to table, and Sean, we call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Julia?
Good morning. Good morning. One quick item for you this morning, and that's to hire Dustin Odegaard as a full-time 911 dispatcher for the sheriff's office at 1950 per hour, effective the 11th of January.
Julia, this is a replacement or a new hire?
So dispatch or communications received one new position this year, 2021. We hired someone, the individual was in the position for about four months and resigned, so we reopened. So it's a new position for 2021, but a backfill of the other position.
So we had the position, position resigned, it was open, so.
Yeah, yep.
In the transfor, so it's a replacement, so many words, for the 911.
Julia, how long has the position been open? You said that the person was in the position for four months, the previous person?
Roughly, yeah.
How long ago was that, if you know? Just recently, or has it been a few months?
Yeah, I think they left, I would have to look back, but I want to say May.
Okay.
Maybe even June.
Okay. Did we have a number of applicants apply?
Oh, yeah, yep.
Were they good quality?
Yes, very much so.
Okay.
Heard the request for the hire approval, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Sean, on that last item, the bid deadline, you said it was 10 o'clock, so we don't even know what we have for bids yet, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And there were no requests for executive session, is that correct? All right, well, we'll be in recess until 10:15.
Sean, I want to thank you for this new sheet that you prepared, for the, for the agenda.
Thank you, sir.
It's a nice, nice change.
Did you get?
Where'd you get a refill?
Open bids for the property.
We have a single bid. I'll open it now.
Thank you. And this is a bid for surplus tax deed property legally described as Hudson Lot 16, Block 20, also known as parcel number 210.10.20.016.
So we have a single bid from Randall W., I believe, Kruid, K-R-U-I-D, for $400.
What was the appraised on that?
Appraised value was $3,500.
What are the thoughts of the board? What do you guys want to do?
This is the only, only one we got?
Yes, sir.
Is this a buildable lot? Or is this that little sliver?
It's a little sliver, approximately 39 by 125 feet. Evidently, there used to be a trailer on it. And that's what I know from the appraisal committee.
I'll entertain a motion, one way or the other.
Thinking out loud, I don't know if you, you could, I suppose you could re-advertise, but you, we advertise for how long, John, on this one? Two weeks or what?
Yep, we aver, we advertise this for two weeks in the legal newspapers, and they were just due 19 minutes ago.
You know, Commissioner Schmidt, I don't like $400 on something assessed at $3,500, but the problem is, there's just no market for this.
Amen.
There is just no market, it's not a marketable piece of property. I mean, if somebody else has some comment or input on it, I'm, I'm willing to accept it, but it just seems like this is just not a highly desirable piece of property, and we can either A, keep it, or B, try to offload it onto the willing public. And right now, the willing public only says $400 bucks.
Well, I agree, and if somebody wanted to buy it for $400 and they wanted to put a mobile home on there that would generate some taxes for the school district and for the county, $3,500 for a little sliver of property, but a bird in the hand. I don't know, if you want to make the motion, Commissioner Aaronz, I'll second it.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Commissioner Gibbon, anything?
No, I don't have anything to add.
Sean, you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
I think that's it. We can consider a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
Thank you. Thank you, Sean.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.